Stevenson?
Here.
Lefebvre?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
Here.
Chicka?
Here.
Nation?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
What's the overall agenda?
There are many changes.
Celeste?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Chicka?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Presentation of petitions and other communications. A public hearing for the vacation and conveyance of that portion of the 16.5 foot east-west alley adjoining block five and block six in the original town of Boone County, Iowa, now annexed to and forming a part of Boone, Boone County, Iowa. Any written comments? Any verbal comments? This public hearing is closed. A public hearing for the conveyance of the vacated north 222 feet of the north-south alley in block 147 in Blair's third addition to Boone County, Boone County, Iowa, now known as Bryant addition to Boone and Boone County, Iowa. Any written comments? Any public comments? This public hearing is closed. A public hearing for the vacation and conveyance of the south 18 feet of the north 240 of the north-south alley in block 147 in Blair's third addition to Boone, Boone County, Iowa, now known as Bryant addition to Boone and Boone County, Iowa. Any written comments? Any public comments? This public hearing is closed. Reports of standing committees. I'll see administration and employee relations committee. No report. Public safety and transportation committee, right?
Number one.
Utility committee. Renicer.
Luke, myself, and Scott, Kenny, representing the Rolling Meadows net, and had a good discussion, went through the agreement, made a few minor changes, and Scott made a present, oh, Scott, excuse me, Luke made a presentation to the people of Rolling Meadows, and I'll let them take it from there, something that went really well, and we're very close to having a percentage to pass.
Yes, yeah, the meeting did go very well. Good crowd that attended, we met out at the first assembly of that church out there, so it was close for them. The main issue on the docket was the requirement of a 20d agreement, as you call, Rolling Meadows, currently they buy water and vote for the city, and we currently do all the utility billing remittance from those folks out there, and we talked about doing away with that and just sending them one bill to Rolling Meadows. They wanted us to continue doing billing, so we put together a 20d agreement, we've been through that process, it's been quite lengthy. One of the conditions that was established through the utility committee of council was that they would have to sign voluntary compensation agreements, that at some point in time if the city so desired to afford compensation, they would be willing to do that. The agreements would be very similar to what we did in the investment project. So we did have that meeting about a week and a half ago, and a very positive reaction, we have to get at least 85 percent of the property from that subdivision to sign those agreements for a voluntary compensation at some point in the future to occur. And right now, I think they need just another 70 acres of land to signature something, which they're confident they will have those to us. Utility committee have given me marching orders, and October 1st is the deadline, they know that, and so this is about three weeks, and we believe that we will have all those in by the October 1st.
Good, thank you. One issue that will be coming back from council, and utility committee discussed it when this first got started, was the installation of a backfiller banner on that large meter, and I believe, is Rob here tonight? I think we were told there's not one on there, we'll discuss it at the utility meeting, but that, if it isn't, we're going to probably ask for that to be installed, we will be at expense for it, but it's truly a protection device for us here in town, so there'd be more to come on that, but that's something that we're quite going to have to handle, especially because of the way the infrastructure is set up. That backfiller banner was right to be, was right to be there, or in conjunction with the, but what it really does is, if they would have the water made break or something, nothing can get back into our service again. So it would prevent it? It would prevent.
Yeah.
It would prevent. Any questions on that? We'll have more information. Thank you, that's all.
You can overlook development committee. Brett, that report, building efficiency, Mr. Pagan?
Your honor, here we are again. Back on the agenda, Luke and I had a pretty good discussion about this rezoning for our two hundred and one, and I know in the last meeting, council raised that, because we're working on this animal ordinance, to put something together with that and bring that back first. I don't know, would you want to give your two cents worth of them?
Yeah, certainly, first of all, I apologize, I wasn't present at the last meeting when this came up, and I had a lot of discussions with some of the property owners out there, specifically, a number of discussions, Ed and I had a lot of talk about this. The request coming forward was prompted by some discussions a couple times ago about modifying livestock control ordinance to identify there would be certain requirements if you live within court limits and if you're in a residential area, identifying minimum lot sizes. There were a number of regulations that came out that were there for the purposes of discussion. Certainly that caused disturbance of the property owners that live in that area that's highlighted by red. Looking at a map and just seeing all those blue lines, it looks an awful lot like that is a residential area, a lot of plots out there. But in reality, each one of the homes that are located within that area, to go out there and physically look at that property, more so resembles a rural setup, where there are actually very large expansive areas, and many of those individuals, if not all of them, have some of their livestock. Their initial concern was prompted by the fact that this livestock issue is on, and we are continuing to research ordinance that will still address that. However, these folks, it's been brought to their attention that if they did revert from R2 zoning to A1, that would give them a little bit more, dare I say, leniency in terms of livestock, for what that property complex currently exists. Ed explained to me that it was at the last meeting that council had some concerns about this rezoning, because we are in the midst of creating that ordinance. And I feel very comfortable agreeing with Ed's recommendation, the recommendation from the zoning commission, that to some extent, even though they seem linked, they are two completely different issues. These folks are seeking out to rezone to an A1 that more matches the characteristics of what exists out there. This is not spot zoning, because it's a large area, number one, it's not just one lot, middle of a commercial area, middle of a residential area. They've done a great job by pulling all the neighboring property owners together, having everybody on the same page. Considering those items, we feel as staff absolutely should move forward, council should consider the request to rezone to A1, and be aware that we are continuing to put together a draft to modify our zoning ordinance to address that issue of livestock.
Luke, I don't think, you weren't here, and I don't think it's a question in the council, or I'll speak myself, but I didn't want to do it, it was a case that I truly didn't understand everything that was going on, and I know the building department was working on that, and I believe Sherri was the same thing, we wanted to get up to speed and understand what it meant, what it all meant when it got put together. And at that meeting, we told them thirty days, we would have a decision made, and that's kind of, and I still feel that same way, because I haven't heard anything from that last meeting to this point, because I knew, you know, after this meeting, we would have the two weeks to research it, get the information to us, and take it back from there. And I still feel fairly strong about that, as far as I'm concerned, I think, you know, you say they're two separate issues, but they're dealing with the same type of thing, in my opinion, and I think it's important for myself to understand what it means, and actually, I did go out there and I see what you're talking about, and I saw a lot of the properties, and I know, you know, they basically are farmsteads or acreages, but I still, in my own mind, want to get a good understanding of both things, and then move forward to the next meeting. And that's, I was going to say, the responsibility.
That's fine. And I want to make sure I explain that it's, certainly, there's not a substance that council either agrees with or disagrees about the rezoning. What I'm trying to explain is that I fear that there's a connection being made between that modification of the ordinance, establishing livestock, and this rezoning request, that they're actually two, to some extent, completely different issues.
So what you're saying is, is that if we wanted to keep it residential, we could tell them, honor ordinance, they could have 300 chickens. If, if we so choose, it has no bearing on the residential requirement, we're discussing.
The ordinance that we're talking about right now is saying that if somebody wants to have livestock in a residential area, they would have to first obtain a special use permit. And we're putting together guidelines that establish how they would go through the process of getting a special use permit, and if they achieve that, are able to get a special use permit, it says, for example, you can have one horse per acre in a residential area. In an agriculturally zoned area in an A1, it would not need any type of special requirement to have livestock.
So this is what's the building of a property?
Right. Part of the reason, and for me, that it seems that these are two different issues, my background experience with zoning, because you tend to look at the type of use that's occurring on that land, and what a property owner wants to do with that property in the future. These property owners have came forward, and to some extent, have said, regardless of what is in your ordinance book, we believe if we ever want to sell our property again, we're going to feel better if we're advertising this as A1 zone property. Because whatever the city's regulations are at that point in time, it's going to be more fitting for how they want to use that land, or how they're willing to sell it.
Does that change the agenda?
No.
Is it greenlit, or is it not greenlit?
Yeah, zoning and tax classification, many times, they appear to be the same, but they have really no relationship. You can have property that is taxed as A1 agricultural, but it can be zoned commercial. So we always say that those two aren't tied together. So here is, if the issue never came up about livestock, and a change to that ordinance, and these folks still came forward and said, listen, we think our property fits more in this A1 district than it does in R2, just as an example. The process that Ed has gone through, is he's looked at our ordinance, and he said, okay, in the A1 district, this is the type of property that fits in this category, this land out here fits that classification. They've made a request, we're responding as staff to the zoning commission, and said, yes, we concur to their request, we can issue granted, that comes to this level.
I understand, it's not, I don't, I understand how the process is worked, I just don't understand all the particulars of both end of these, and quite honestly, did not take the time the past two weeks to look at that, because I thought we had thirty days, like what we talked about, for things to be brought to us, and brought to me, maybe everybody else understands, but I really don't understand both issues, and for me to know on that, I don't, I don't think it's probably an issue, but, but I want to understand it before I go into.
Is there something about terminations?
And if some, if an animal, if someone lost the animal, you know, could they replace it that was brought up last time, I mean, we all had, here and had my stuff, because we didn't know, we absolutely did not know, and that's not the way I would think this council must operate, we want to understand, when we pass something, what it means, and what the regulations would be, and, you know, we don't, I don't think anybody feels like they want to handcuff people, but we want to understand what we're passing, or I want to understand, I'm going to speak for it, I just want to understand what it means. Right now, it's good.
Well, it was that it's two separate issues, we just got to address one issue at a time. We're basically, we're cruel, we boysmen cruel, we get cruel mail, bus, school bus, city does not bring down city sewer or anything. We got all the statistics out there, and to resell it, it gets really confusing, when you look on, we get, because we're agriculture, and we're not, we really are too, people get confused on that. And we've always used the property as an urban acreage, so we're trying to comply to what we are currently using it as, not residential, we have always used it as a, which is the A1.
Has it always been residential?
We, I mean, everybody out there preparing to probably, we, we want to say trucks up.
I think that's the question that they've got, or that I've drawn out of this thing, is that if, if you want to sell your property, your hands would be a bit tied, as to, say you sold the riding, the riding stables out there, and that property was all sold, would the next people be able to get, buy that and buy it out as a riding stable? Well, under the R2, they wouldn't be able to, I don't believe, but under the A1, they would be able to.
Do you know that for sure, Luke? That's my question. See, I don't think anybody really knows for sure what the answers are to that, I'm just being honest, I don't think anybody really knows, and that's, that's why we need to truly have an answer, what it means if we do, what it means if we don't. You know, is it going to be the best in their interest, it sounds like it probably is, but.
So we have to, in the form of a verified ordinance, yeah.
There you go. And that's what we're asking for, and that's what.
Do you want to, do you want to draft an ordinance to verify this before you decide or something?
But Luke said it doesn't make any difference. I know. Yeah. The ordinance that we're talking about would not make any changes to any of this. Essentially, that district, if they wanted to have livestock, Ed told me if I'm wrong, for an A1 district, it wouldn't change. In other words, the questions that you would ask right now, can you have horses in an A1 district? Yes. After this new ordinance that is being proposed, even in various forms, still in an A1 district, yes.
And I think we're kind of moving off topic here, the only change we're making is what they're already using the property for, it's not like we're having the permission to hold those residential properties, the acres through acreages, they're already using this as a rural setting.
So if we change it to A1, can we do that?
Yes.
That doesn't limit what they can build, or is, there, it's not there to lots. It just limits them replacing a horse if they buy it, or if they sell it, then they can't rent a property, and then when they do sell it, many people are buying.
We've got our current language.
But that's what you're working on.
If it remain, if the land remains as residential, then yes, then they would be impacted by that modification ordinance, if they're rezoned to A1, then they would not be impacted by the change.
It seems close. As you mentioned earlier, about one horse per acre in residential.
If they were able to achieve a special use permit.
Is there a difference in it, have you ever told you were A1 for horses per acre?
Actually, if you're in an A1 area, some of those minimum requirements, with change, it's not affected by zoning at that point, it comes with that. Adam?
We're still have to abide by, there is a city limit, we still have to abide by the rules of the city, try to, we're still have to obey, you know, for body type, either way, it's just basically protecting, helping them sell their property, not confusing on if we're ag or not.
That doesn't make sense to me, because if you say you still have to abide by the rules.
But.
That, that's what I don't understand, you see where I'm coming from, I mean, I don't think there's clarity on that.
The current, the issue is, the current code says that in residential zone, you cannot have livestock, period, which is not anywhere that the Humane Society, Animal Control is concerned, that's not anything that we deal with in forcing. Now, the standard of care that comes in with the one acre per horse, or so many chickens, that's where we come in, that's the ordinance that they're later looking to rewrite, to make some changes to, to make it so that we can make sure that animals of, you know, livestock nature are being cared for properly within the city of Boone, regardless of whether they are in residential, or, well, they can be residential, whether they're in these A1 zones or not.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but your contract with the county?
Right, right.
There you go. Your contract with the county gives you the same authority in the county, huh?
Yes. And the standard of care is a little different, because in the county, there's not minimum space requirements. See, it's kind of a fuzzy thing that is what started this whole deal.
But the same services you provide?
Yes.
Is the same in the city and the county?
Yes.
So there's no change there, regardless of what we zone it as?
Exactly, well, it would still be under your jurisdiction, because it would just be agricultural within the city of Boone, that would be building department or zoning enforcement. Like, I do not go into these residential, or these guys are zoned residential right now, and they have horses, which is technically a violation, and that's not mine, I don't go handle that.
Only a little bit.
All I care is how they're being treated, or is there current or re-paxation, that's everything, so that's where, does that help at all for clarification?
So if we, if we improve this to A1, then, then at that point, that's where we can clarify per with the ordinance of how much livestock they can have in that area, is that, is that what we're heading to? If you change to A1, then at that point, the council can then decide, how much, or, or can, or can we then at that point, consider?
Either that, I mean, really, to take a step back, council has to determine where they would like to allow livestock in court limits. If you would like to allow livestock in residential areas, you can write up your ordinance to address that. If you'd like to allow livestock in residential areas with certain circumstances, we can create an ordinance to do that, that's the draft that we currently have on the table.
That's what gets really confusing, especially for animal control and everybody else, because it's not clear, you know, who's what.
I'm just thinking that, and I know it wouldn't happen, because it's not a big enough area, but just for example, if you made it A1, I mean, I don't even think these people want a hog lot out there, you know, I'm just trying to say, look, at some point, you'll just tell the council, then if you make it A1, have these abilities, you can then set parameters at that point.
Absolutely.
Which is still without animal authority.
That scares a little bit.
Now, the direction that we've been heading in is that the focus has been in residential areas to address regulation, now, council wants us to now create guidelines that say that in an agricultural area, under zoning, to restrict what can take place there with livestock, and we could add that to ordinance as well. At this point, it was just identified as allowable use.
And to fix something that's already hurting by national authorities, just let it go away, okay?
There's limits on the number of livestock in head, and everything that's in the standard of care, because under the city's standard of care with, in regards to livestock, that's where it says, you have to have at least an acre per horse, which, that's where they're saying you can't put 52 hogs on a half acre lot, that's where that falls in, is it falls into there, so.
Regardless of what.
I understand your concern, yeah, it does matter to the zoning, as far as you still not going to, I don't believe, unless we're up, you're not going to fall into getting a hog lot, because there's still that minimum space requirement per animal.
You know, you ask, but you don't know it, because you, if you sell it to somebody, see, that's what we have to worry about, we're not worried about what you're doing, but what happens if you sell it to somebody else, and there is no rules or regulations?
No, no, definitely the hundred percent rules, there is already what's definitely.
Well, there isn't, though, that's the problem. You say that there's, no, excuse me, you just said that there's a rule that you can have one horse per acre, well, you got more than one horse out there per acre, so it's not by the rules, the way it is, am I correct?
Here, I'm going to take a little bit of fault here, keep in mind, I'm talking about the zoning ordinance.
I, I understand.
Now, there is a separate ordinance that is for animal care, that is the one, this is making it look very bureaucratic, and I apologize for that, but there is a separate ordinance that covers standard of care for animals, and that is regardless of what zoning district.
Within the city.
I think it might be easier for us to write, if this were zoned A1, it may be easier for us to write that ordinance for certain controls on A1 than if we just leave it as R2, and say, I guess what I'm thinking is, here we've got a lot of these places out here, I think one of them is 13 or 14 acres, maybe more, that we may have some other areas in town, when we start talking about an acre, or an acre and a half, and if we leave this as R2, and write the ordinance for R2, we may have somebody down here by the country club that has an acre of land that maybe can raise a horse there.
I would hate to see us write an ordinance specification for residential, when it's made, right?
Yeah, I just asked my.
That's why we've got to have a special permit.
They have to get a special.
And that takes care of that, weren't we going to take that through the planning zoning area, the ones that were initially?
And is that what you're working on now, that?
In, in special use.
So, so, am I hearing you say that there needs to be two of them, one that would be, one that would dictate, or I usually would dictate, one, one that would rule over the ag land, and then one that would rule over residential land?
I think, I guess.
There already is something on the book for the residential.
Yeah, we're talking about rewriting that, because we have to, we have to determine what is livestock and what isn't, I mean, that's, that's one of the issues that was forefront of that.
And that's where the permit comes in, because.
Right, right.
I think, I'm seeing.
Well, that's the, again, that's kind of the draft concept moving forward.
Which I think is a good idea.
And if, and I don't want to discount, if there's confusion from council, I don't want to make it sound like we're pushing this concept, I was just simply trying to explain that I realize that, I'm saying they're two different issues, being discussed at the same time, so obviously, they're not, and, but if there's enough discomfort about that, the main concern is for the property owners that want to move forward with that rezoning, and I'm just saying that from a staff's perspective, we see that these are enough separate, that we're comfortable with what council is reporting, if you're still not yet comfortable with that, and you still want to see that draft ordinance have that about it first, ultimately, that, that's your decision to make.
And if we were to go ahead and rezone this to A1, to A1, then we can still write the ordinance any way we want.
Exactly.
See, I would like to see us clean up the ordinance here, here it is first, if we write all the ordinance as residential and citywide, because if we're only solely going to be agriculture, which is the reason we're writing this ordinance.
I thought that was the idea of the whole thing.
What's that?
I thought that was the idea of the whole thing.
Right, but specifically for agriculture, you know, A1 will have its definitions, and then residential, R2 will have theirs, but R2 definitions might not fit A1, so let's specify what, what is agriculture, what's the use of agriculture, and then have our staff work on the ordinance to section the city.
One of my, one of my main concerns of the way I approached this in the beginning, is saying they're two different issues, this is a pretty big jump, but go back to when we created that of the old use section of our ordinance, completely different type of land use, but if we had somebody at the time pursuing to a rezoning, and we were putting off a decision until after we made a change in our ordinance to address that, there are some legal issues with doing that.
I'm sorry, adult?
Yeah, adult entertainment. If you remember when that, there was a question, that may have even been.
That obviously read for my time.
That, that tends to create social controversy in individuals, and there are communities that have faced that, and what happens is they have somebody that wants to do an adult use establishment, move to the process of rezoning, and the city will put a roadblock, and say, well, wait till we get our ordinance changed before we make a decision on that. And I'm just saying that because of this, according to our current regulations, or what they're proposing, that it works, we don't really have any legal findings that justify not moving forward to that, even if there's an ordinance in the midst of being threatened. So to some extent, it's, I don't know that it's a legal issue, and I don't think that it's something where somebody is going to come back and. think that it's something where somebody is going to come back and say, well, the city should approve that, we're losing money. Certainly not, not that situation.
Because the city needs full ordinance authority in within the city.
Right. Even if it's rezoned to A1 and you come back and you wanna create ordinance that does control livestock even in A1 district, you can do that.
Well, that, that, this part of town, as long as I've done my, and what it is, that's, that's what that little properties up there mean. I don't have issues. I, um, personally, I, I don't see the reason why we wanna keep them in R, in R2 and then have a special permit for that. Because to me, that's just kinda ridiculous. I can understand a special permit for areas inside closer here and there.
Because that was one of the livestock, there's no special permit for livestock.
But if it's, if it's so.
If it's so. Now, if we, if it's A1, then they wouldn't have to worry about that part. But quite frankly, I, I just assume they didn't have to worry about that part, but, uh.
You can also send a room to make a motion if we go ahead and rezone that to A1.
Seven.
Mel?
Yes.
Dex?
Yes.
Kimma?
Yes.
Nigel?
Hope State.
Ryan?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
We will work at, understanding the concerns of council, a number of questions there. We'll try to, when we come forward, be very detailed in our explanation of what this looks like because we understand the confusion. We certainly apologize for that. We'll continue to work with humane society as well to try and answer those questions.
Actually, what we'll need is a public hearing, we can extend it for a year. And at, at X P, we should have a special. Make a motion, set on calendar for a public hearing.
Seven.
Seventeen, September.
Hold on. Dex?
Yes.
Kimma?
Yes.
Nigel?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yeah.
Garcia?
Yeah.
Mel?
Yes.
Library, Star, we're up here, parts down here. My name is Officer Michael.
Uh, in your package, you will see that you have a finance report. And a lot of the things about finance report is a new sheet, um, that is, um, the bank tax, which is the cover sheet that shows the, the previous layabout. And then under the consent agenda, there should be a resolution for the annual screen coming up there for. I think that that was all part of your annual company that you have on Friday. That's just basically a report that the state departments have developed showing how we run the version.
We have a, we have a, you know, a real presence.
They create the data ways that others wouldn't show to see what they know. And then if they need it, if they're not filing it, they can come tomorrow. We better have that happen, but.
Borrow?
Yeah.
Andrea, do you wanna touch on just the basic percentage numbers for the, on the financial?
Financial, sure. Uh, basically, I highlight, I used to go through this, um, and I highlight the name of the fund. And we're sitting on the, the total for the general fund, um, there's a three point four five percent, uh, that we receive compared to our budget. So the current budget, um, for our general fund is three million nine hundred five thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars. We received to date a hundred and thirty-six thousand and seven hundred thirty-six dollars and twenty-one cents, which is three point four five percent of the budget. Remember, our, um, this will go from July to that point. The current month and year to date are the same. As we go on, the year to date will go higher than the current month. We change each month. Uh, for expenditures, uh, total budget is three million nine hundred five thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars. Today, we spent a hundred and thirty-nine thousand three hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety cents, which is eight point six nine percent. For hotel hotel, we have not received any, uh, we've got, is a revenue that we get on a quarterly basis, um, to meet that balcony for this fiscal year. Uh, but we have spent, um, point three point four five percent of our expanded budget. Um, and that's because, uh, July 1st, we had sent out, um, the hotel hotel, um, the first half of it. The road use fund, we received seven point five one percent. And I guess I should also state that, um, at the end of July, we have, uh, we're at eight point three three percent of our budget. So if it's below eight point three three, then we're good. If we're above it, then it might be due to the funding that was working. Uh, the road use, uh, for expenditures, we spent nine point seven three percent. Local option self-taught, uh, we receive eight point eight percent. And we have spent thirteen point two percent. And my resource center, we receive six point nine five percent. And we have spent three point two percent. Water utility, we received one point three percent and have spent five point nine percent. So utility, we received eight point five three percent and spent two point fifty eight percent. Small water, we received eight point seven five percent. And we spent one point three three percent. For coral, we received nine point one eight percent. And we have spent five point two two percent. And third page, um, is just a access report that shows what we have a current balance. Uh, if you remember right, uh, we did a second, um, account as a good thing, just for, um, in case of emergency or whatever reason we may need that, if we couldn't get hold the funds enough, we may go with any, which doesn't create anything. Uh, it shows what we've received in interest. I cannot change, most of our interest payments are for need to, um, get them and show the persons on a monthly basis, especially if we have this rate and all that, if somebody was kind of placing a tiny contribution at all. Um, outstanding debt sector is like seven thousand, uh, four hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy cents. And the last page of the sector is our bank debt facility. So both of the banks.
And you mentioned that you're working on fund balances so that you can keep them up to date gradually, uh, because we've talked about our reserve fund goals and open windows. And that's something Andrea wants to do on a periodic basis, basis to make sure that you understand how much we have on those days. Just to give you a good picture of what the city finances look like, uh, with the bits. Thank you for that.
Now, Dr. Dr. Seagull here. Some of you boys aren't here. Some of the engineers aren't here. Director of Public Safety is here.
Yes, ma'am.
He's here.
I have something. In your packets is the contract documents, um, for the facade police department. Um, I think we had, just had a chance to look at that. Um, I'll refer you to page GR2 under nine summer and work. It's basically somewhat the same as what we did for the demolition of the police department. And that had been completed with the exception of a walk through with moved construction. We came up with four things, actually, Dwayne's been looking a lot of the protocols. The four things of the design of, of the, uh, new facade plus three options on, um, how to do the facade. Those are on GR2. Those are the base bid. It's similar to the attached markup photo on the back of the contract. Brick limestone and new windows, lettering and borders, decarded limestone were shown. That's the base bid. You have an alternative bid, which is similar, has a brick limestone and some split face block and the new windows. A portion of the facade should be split face block. Areas around the doors, windows, leather and bead limestone, uh, lettering and borders should be covered with limestone. Alternate two, uh, similar to the attached brick limestone, split face block, only more split face block rather than brick in that alternative number two. On, um, page, part of the back, plan of proposal, then it has your description of the facade improvement designs. The bidder will come up with the, the design and what it's gonna take. I, I skipped all the words. And then, uh, item number two, the base bid, two, one, alternate bid and two point two.
Before you go on that, just to repeat the facade improvement, this would be the design where some of the pictures that you saw that came in the council packet isn't the final design. The concept is that's a general idea to give the contractors. We spoke with some of the contractors and, um, they're looking for some kind of general direction. So that's what we put the drawings together so that they would know what we're looking for. But ultimately, they would put together a design scheme, bring it to council for final approval.
One thing I noticed on it, I'm sure that maybe with the reason for it, shows that our police force was established in two thousand seven.
Well, actually, I think what you're going to there is when the meeting in this building was established, it's next house in September two thousand six.
Yeah, I just thought maybe that might be something to look at, because as a stranger driving through town, it's, you know, police force.
As regards to the ordinance, uh, correct if I'm wrong, but we'd ask to have an ordinance order to be, uh, stone or, or brick, uh, hard way, like what we require all the businesses and then to get an ordinance of what it would be if you put metal, uh, bounce away versus going, uh, brick or split face. I think that was asked for, when we talked with, uh, Dwayne the last time, that was asked to be an order, so we could see what the price of that would be.
That did come up, I, I recall that. And we talked about it, and I know you mentioned that earlier. I don't remember that specifically talking about metal as an option, but certainly it, it's easy enough at this point. That's why this come back to council. If you'd like to see an alternative, alternate or one of these alternates changed to say something to the effect of.
I don't know those pictures. And I guess I don't care, metal, I just think that we need to look at an alternate versus going all brick up. We need to look at an alternate that would be, uh, something that would be a non-brick, a non-stone product. It would not have the whole base. Let's see if that.
So.
I'm pretty sure we talked about that too.
So. We did. So, and that's what this does include is that alternate materials other than brick, but it actually talks about split face block. So in these descriptions, would you want us just to strike, for example, alternate number two?
I mean, Wayne can rewrite it, and so he can write it the right way, but I think we should put something in there that would be a non, a non-brick or non, um, that way leaves it open if they've got some other type of material versus steel put up, which I don't know what that could be.
So under alternative two here, where it says, and replacement, brick, split face block, limestone, maybe we could put four non, um, non-brick or non-block material?
No, because that stone won't catch it because they would have their choice to either go brick, split face or limestone. I want an alternate. I'm asking for an alternate that would not have brick or a hard surface material. That's, that's.
Did you say, Luke, that, I mean, whoever's gonna fit on this has to bring their own design to the.
Yes, say that, yes. So ultimately, you would see the design with the material list and what their, so you're talking about an alternative number three that would say?
So maybe just turn to talk to brick or alternate one. Alternate number two would be brick and maybe split face or something. And alternate number three would be brick and some other materials such as steel. I think it's important to look at the prices on it, just so we see what the prices are. I know we talked that some of the funding is coming from Perry Garvey, but I still think it's right to most concede that, that what the alternates are. I think that's right.
Phil, does that make sense with?
Yeah, whatever down is brick or something, or some other materials as steel as an example.
And that would be, that would be alternate number three. So we would add additional alternative.
So basically, it would be all brick or half brick, maybe split face, that's alternate number two. Alternate number three would be brick and a non-brick material.
Now, ultimately, when these contractors receive these packets, we've been trying to determine, uh, ahead of time, what kind of questions they're having, what, are there some general concepts? Are you thinking of a metal material that would be in this area here above that, above this tan line? So for example, everything above this first captive tan line there, everything here would be some kind of alternative material?
Or you can just end, end it close to where the, where the police department sign is and everything from the windows, uh, except for that sign, this could be a different material.
So maybe from, for example, everything up there?
And, and that's why you let them design, build it and see, because that way you can see what the cost savings, maybe there won't be, but I think you'll be surprised.
So we might say that fifty percent of the sign would be some alternative materials such as steel?
What do we, uh, actually, I'm talking about, how about the stairs and everything? Are they gonna, the way they are, getting out into the sidewalk or?
Yeah, I think of replacing.
You're thinking about recessing back to the.
Well, I just wanted to.
Are we?
Having a certain cost.
I don't know what a situation. It may not be a, it should be incorporated.
I, well, I don't know percentages, but I think that's.
Incorporated here.
But it's a requirement for brick. I mean, if I were to go and do store downtowns, break down to thirty percent or?
Yeah, well, I'd be, first, I'm sorry, just in commercial districts, thirty percent.
Thirty percent?
So that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe that would be the way to put it in there, in that alternate number three, that there must be at least thirty percent. And then we let people design, probably only a hundred in that form.
And well, we have, usually we need the requirement that everybody else has got thirty percent.
And that's kinda where I come from. Because, you know, we make everybody else do a certain percentage quote, we do it all. I, I don't know what people are gonna say for sure. And I think we're sure at least we'll get it, so we'll see what the options are.
Okay, getting back to the, so I have all this straight. Recess stairs, is that something you want us to put in the bid?
Can you turn a ninety degree, would that work better or not? So then, do it now.
You have to change, you have to change the door, don't you?
You have. Oh, no, it's because the door's already.
We have that landing.
Yeah, exactly.
We have that landing.
And that, that way you're gonna have to have a landing, you know, what?
No, I guess.
So how about ADA?
Do we have that covered?
The south entrance is the ADA entrance. And to give you an idea, maybe once every two or three months, does somebody, is, that means to you that? But we have to have it. And, and we need invocations for, for the south. So, I mean, if you wanna add it to the north entrance, then you're probably gonna have cost of that. But we do have it, we do have it by standard, we're, we're okay.
And just since we are reviewing, we do not have to have that front ADA since we're fully ready?
As long as you have one, if it's successful, it needs to be at least requirement.
Personally, I'd like to see maybe an alternate, and they're saying, if everybody sets that door, and you're just rolling there, you know?
So that'd give you a full sidewalk through there.
Yeah.
Do you want that added to an alternate or all the alternates?
Or in the base?
As, and the alternate. Is that what you're saying?
Well, you know, it'd be not too old the price to be between them down the.
Well, you know, it'd be not too old the price would be between them, you know, if they were going to fit it, and he says, go on, take that out, if you don't, take that out, so.
And you could use that alternate on any of the front sides, wherever they would design, that alternate would be. You're, you are.
I think we should recess stairs.
I think we should recess that door, make that, so the stairs don't stick out as, as standard, and then if the price is too high, we can come back to the contractor and say, how much less would it be to leave it what it is? Or you, you know, I guess that might be. We could, I don't have any, I always think that looks terrible, those steps that are not like that.
But not to make that handicap except to maintain just the stairs?
Yeah.
The general design.
Starwood, is that?
Not like. We have that approval?
Yeah.
What we're going to do is, where the arrows are, the north side, we're taking out those windows on the north side. You're suggesting that for, if you'd be an excellent, that that's probably, but as long as we have the two windows there, I don't know if it's necessary that we need ones on the north side.
So essentially, these would be functional windows.
Right.
These would be a type of, I mean, still windows, but they would not provide the access or something.
So what do you ask them, but nothing on it, it's either just be a.
And I think that you actually talked about that in the stone to create this behind about this area.
Now, just right here, a small part of the original.
These are windows immediately on the other side, those windows is an office. So there was discussion, they'll prefer some security there to actually have that wall on the inside.
Just that small area, there is.
That's what we saw, like, we're going to have a barrel of that, which is not. That's the farthest window from the handicap, or the closest window to the handicap entrance, there you go, from that window, the next one too. For the next one too. That is the next one, but those two are actually in the garage, is that correct?
Yes.
And then the next two are in the conference room, or in the conference room, something.
That would be the break room.
A break room?
Yes. Yeah, so that, this one's break room.
Yeah.
Office.
Mike, just, just asking a question, is it, is it necessary, or would there be? Is it necessary to have those three, or the south, three, or the south face windows?
Why don't we do like this here, let's just kind of let them bid it like that, and then we can start pulling stuff out and see what, what can come up with.
Because if they're not, if they're not used, you know, I don't know what their cost would be. Because they're going to be blank, right, inside.
Those were just my understanding, this is pure essence, the way it goes, the, the design and how the building looks. They certainly don't function.
So can, will they be maintenance after ten years?
Well, they just call, I'm not ones that are just dummies. I mean, you could go see your glass, you may have to go for a little while. Yeah, there'll be a maintenance problem.
I began with talking around the inside, but they're all good.
Who?
Fifty years in your eyes.
Sorry, I'm going to be.
You'll be like, you're supposed to charge your ground, how would you replace this picture?
Yeah, there's no doubt that ongoing maintenance is something that we absolutely have to be aware of, and those are going to be some really good questions that with the bid we receive, with those windows, but if you're, at this point, if you're thinking that you don't like the either appearance, or if you're sure you wouldn't want those, I would just soon have a design that's as clean and clear to contractors, in all fairness to them, so that they know when they're getting involved with them.
Okay, then, now, here's what I'd like to see, so let's leave it like that, but let's have, leave, give an alternate to.
Leave off those.
So leave off those, huh?
To leave off their windows?
The last three, the last three sets.
All right, now I'm going to highlight the ones, so these.
Now, and I'm saying that, and I just hope by what Bill says, I don't say that because they're basically dummy windows.
Mine is, they're in glass and brick too.
The response that we've had at this point is that they're, that's why, pretty similar, cost of brick and glass, it would end up being about the same.
With that solution.
The difference being, when we were looking at designs and having this all as some type of block, that vast building is just block.
Yeah, that gives it a unique look. Now, if you put lights in every one of those.
That's, that's not what this shows, it only. Like here and the lighting on the side of the door.
The last thing we want to do is have a situation like what we have on the south entrance. So last thing, you know, is have something that's going to cost us over and over and over, after less than ten years.
So if, if that's. So the alternate would be to, according to this general design, do something other than having these three bays essentially halfway point seven? Phil, does that make sense? Because we're going to repeat this stuff.
Yeah, I, I've got it down, leave, leave off three south windows as in one of the alternates.
I think we see that. Which is all right, you do it. I think when we see that, if that role of brick, you know, on the brick.
I think you're right. But, but keep in mind, guys, Andros, excuse me, you're just one of the, you know that, Andre's one of the best. You don't want to put something like that in there, you're going to have to be, maybe maintenance.
We do have a picture of what it would look like without, I mean, something blocking those windows.
I know we can get some advertising money for that.
All right, just for the, I don't eat donuts. So the, essentially, we're looking at some, some additional alternates, one would be minimizing the amount of stone type material, essentially having about fifty percent of the front facade, leaving it, leaving some freedom with the contractors to come up with alternative material. And we would be throwing out metal, fiberglass, EBS, what, some other type of alternative. I figured you might say that, but.
But on that, on that same line, you better put, must be at least a minimum of thirty, or whatever that number is.
Yeah, and I have that, at least thirty percent to meet current requirements. And then alternate number four would be, uh, to recess those stairs to see what that expenditure would be, and that means go up all sets of stairs. You wouldn't hit that first stair until you're past the front. And an alternate of leaving off, according to this picture, these last three bays and windows, or some other type of alternative design.
So that would be as part of five, you're saying alternate five?
Yeah, alternate five would be to leave off the windows.
The other four that are still there will be real windows?
No, the, the only real windows, it would be real functional windows here. And I, I want to say again, I know I've said this a number of times, but they will be putting together a design, and that'll be part of this bid, is to then come back and present to council a design.
Is that going to cut out too much light?
No, I think we'll be fine with the two that we have, it'll be okay.
Are you closing one on the north side or two?
Being in that office, somewhat of a heating cooling issue than that, but.
Yeah, one office where the heat, I don't know, is to improve the sun. So I'm hoping too on the north side, that will improve the efficiency. And also have the two windows on each side of the bedroom entrance that will provide light for the, for the, for the light, and it's still the only season things that I got online.
I think what, uh, just to clarify, there was a question about the stair, two thousand seven, I think that what we had talked about is not having anything, any type of signage over that door. Just have the police department and then an address over the stair. And this would be smaller, maybe wouldn't go up that high, just minimize something outside there.
Now, you want us to put this together, bring it back to council, or put it together and move forward, so that, if you'll notice on there, we have some deadlines, because we know the council is sensitive to getting this done. So what would you like us to do there?
You know what we want, I don't see a risk to bring that problem.
All right, we'll put it together and go forward with that time schedule. Thank you.
So two items, just an update, Farm Progress Show, I'm sure everybody saw the activity in town, resorting to that show. One of the impacts, I stopped out to the municipal airport on Wednesday about noon. The individual working there had identified that just a day and a half through the show, they already had more activity than essentially that, than, uh, better financials than the past two years, some extent of mine. So they attributed it in large part due to the drug weather, uh, one of our councilmen, Councilman Isrum, had called me up one day concerned with the no fly zone associated with Oklahoma visit that had been that that impacted people when they could come in and out of there, and that's part of the reason why I stopped by the airport. And they said that that may have created a little bit more congestion at the beginning and the end of the day, uh, but there's, they were still just saying that because of the nice weather, their numbers were, were better, so that was real, real nice to see. Also, uh, the Leo Cities Conference is coming up, September twenty fifth through twenty eighth, and we have two councilmembers attending. Gregor going to that, there's still time for registration, if anybody else wants to attend, please let me know. Property Day is coming up, September sixth and ninth, a lot of fun events going on there, please visit, I believe the mayor is doing the open ceremonies. Uh, that would be on Thursday, six p.m. actually, when he does the open ceremony. I think usually that's the pretty good timing. Uh, also, a final note, maybe this will make some of you happy, some maybe not, but sort of thinking about goal setting and budget prep time. Thinking about the CFP project, are we renewing any particular goals, as you recall, that's what we start out with, doing a goal setting session, and that helps drive some of the direction for the budget. So just ten percent, cut and spread, she's the class. I, I can come up with a, a few last, but I don't know about ten percent. That's all right.
Set agenda, are you going to consider agenda that we need to pull before we go in? I did have one question, can I keep about how many computers for our police cars? And then it says we're getting computers for each of the police cars.
Yes, we're getting seven, and we brought four, being paid four two nine one one.
Move it up, move it up.
Second.
Call roll. Kingma?
Yes.
Maxton?
Yes.
Ray? Susan?
Yes.
Lassie?
Yes.
Fallon?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Seven, alternate space. Third and final consideration of ordinance twenty one eighty six, amendment ninety two oh two, rates for service based on property classification, year seven twenty five twelve.
Sorry.
Call roll. Maxton?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Lassie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Kappa?
Yes.
Move it up.
Call roll. Ray?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Lassie?
Yes.
Fallon?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Kingma?
Yes.
Maxton?
Yes.
Okay, mayor's comments, we'll talk about John, he's not here. Comment about the mayor, so. Uh, councilman members' comments.
Uh, hey, I wanted to bring up, I my phone calls today, not the ones in the race track last night, very happy. I am home for half an hour complaining about it, and I tried to explain to him when I told him where it's going to last all week, he thought that it was an addiction. So you mean it's not one day? So, uh, he urged me to do something about it, like I told him, I said, this is kind of a longstanding tradition, I didn't want to do anything about it, but I said, if you want to come to council, we can discuss it, we can do that, so.
It was a little. I think that's about the latest I've been approved, and.
Four or six. Just four or six.
I had a call too, and I understand, and I support that track, I, I know how much money brings you to do it, it's a good thing. But I think it might be wise to talk with them about, they know, I, I think they know when they have large numbers or, or know when there's a large groups, they can start that earlier in their daylight hours, or why they couldn't start earlier.
Probably had yesterday's rain, and that's why they got delayed until six o'clock to start.
But instead of starting at two, they could have started at ten o'clock.
So.
And that's, you know, we can't, you can't tell someone how to run the business, I understand that, but quite honestly, six, not ending till four or six in the morning, it was, it was pretty loud. It was pretty loud.
There was a limitation there, not about starting early, but a certain time of the day, it will suddenly set a certain angle, you can't run the car.
Back, back around, president's line.
I had a complaint about dogs, I mean, this is weird, but I don't know, are any of the people here, there they are, are you Jessica and Eric? The police chief knows about it, Heidi is here because I talked to her today from the main society, so, do you have anything to add to it, Eric?
It's, it's less about, my pets got killed by two dogs last week, three of my chickens in my backyard with an offense, two of them were in a coop. The attack happened at dusk, it was very sudden, the moment where Jessica heard sound, she went out and three of the chickens were already dead. Fourth one lost all its tail feathers and injured the legs, it was hiding in the nesting box. When we captured the dogs, when I first came on the scene, the police were already there, they responded really quickly, which I was really happy about. I, you know, dogs will be dogs type of thing, but as the police officer reported this into animal control, he responded to us saying, oh yeah, animal control, I just got ahold of them, they've been looking for these dogs for a while. Um, there's been multiple reports of them loose, people complaining, um, that they've been around running loose at large. Um, there's been multiple reports of them loose, people complaining, um, that they've been around running loose at large, just apparently they haven't been caught. Um, just really sad that it took animals dying for them to be caught. And they, you know, they got pounded, and they were released. This morning, the gentleman was walking dogs, one without a leash, the other one on a leash, it's a small white pit bull, in a black lab. Um, I just feel like they're not responsible, people owning these type of animals, if after this instance, they will walk one without a leash, knowing they've killed small animals. Um, and they've been complained about for apparently years, um, distributing flyers in the area, warning people about them, we wish we had been warned. And we just feel like it's a public safety thing to have these type of animals, have been complained about all the time, it took, like I said, animals dying for something to happen at all. I'm just worried what it will take for them to remove from the area, like, how much damage would it mean, you know, to cause to their people or other animals or things like that? I just want to have everyone be aware of it.
You live how far, you live where, you're supposed to be?
Four blocks north.
Three blocks.
Three blocks north.
It's not like they're going next door, they're true.
Yeah. Where do you live? Two 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 Platte Street? They're on, they're on Union Street.
There's an ordinance, uh, that the dogs have to be on a leash. There's an ordinance, and dogs have to be on a leash.
Yeah.
I wish I would've called when I saw, I was just so amazed that after the pass, they would run right by the house with the one on the leash again. And I thought, I mean, he turned around and headed back, that's why I assumed it was me by the time, I don't know if they asked the animals to see them above the leash, you know, for anything to matter, I'm not sure if it would've been worth it.
Just a couple points of clarification, um, we have not received the ordinance, reports of these dogs, or multiple reports of these dogs. This is the second incident in a box month, um, these people were cited for this, um, for letting their dogs run at large. So this isn't an ongoing issue that has been ignored by the Humane Society, we can address it multiple times, we have been notified about it.
What happened first?
Killed chickens.
So two cases that have been killed.
Under the city ordinance, it states as a dangerous animal, that any animal on its own initiative that kills domestic livestock are fouled and is considered dangerous, and it's happened twice, and they're still not considered dangerous.
I have a meeting with Adam on Thursday morning at seven o'clock to discuss further consequences of our situation.
I do, we're, we're not trying to plan our anxiety at all, we had neighbors that will let me call, so if they maybe thought they should've called, and now we're saying that they did, you know, I apologize, we're not trying to attack whatsoever personally. Um, that's just what our neighbors told us, that they had called.
I have concerns now that, uh, if we don't contact that owner, that they know, that, uh, city could be on the hook for a dog running loose, somebody getting mauled by that dog. That's what kind of worries me, if it's got the taste of blood from the chickens and so on, it's gonna maybe be a little two-year-old, three-year-old kid walking down the street. That really worries me.
I don't foresee that with these dogs, with my experiences. These dogs are, they're not like last time I appeared, or with the last dog that I appeared for this evening, or I had concerns. These dogs are not, don't display any aggression towards people. They, you know, I have concerns about a lot of dogs, and these are, these are not settled now, but that doesn't business the fact that they have killed twice in the past month, that's why I'm gonna be with Alan and see what we can, where we go with this. But I did check all of our logs, now, mind you, we just switched to computers two years ago. Uh, so anything that happens prior to that, I did consult with my senior animal control officer, who's been with us for twelve years, she does not remember, um, this is a problem area, and believe it or not, she has a jaw, or a mind, like a steel trap, and she remembers every little, you know, in any area where there's been incidents, it's with repeated calls from the dogs, so.
Well, when you work down, when you work together, would you call, let's, and let her know what's going on, and work with, whatever you're gonna do, down.
Yeah.
So that she knows, and I, and I think if your neighbors know that they need to call the Humane Society, to let them know the dogs are running, so they're at least when they get there, or whatever. We need to keep a record, we need to report every time you see that many of those. So that we aren't suddenly finding a two-year-old that had been harmed or Is, is there a limit of at-large citation before it changes, or?
Yes, when they get, um, after the third citation for the same offense, um, that fourth citation can include a stipulation with the court, that, um, animal has to be relocated outside of, you know, considering that's a thing. But it's
So it would have to kill chickens a third time, to be cited? Twice?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of where I want to talk with Alan, because these are owned by the same person, so it's in the, under the control, city ordinance is to call as the owner, how many times the owner's been cited, because I'll say that we're not citing the dogs here, we're citing the owner. So is this the two citations, is that one and the two, or is that just one for the same issue? These are things that I don't know, and that's why I wanted to talk to him, because I don't know.
The amount of citations applying for mandatory removal, things like that, is, that's what they are, and, you know, things. There's also, it can be up to discretion without a certain number of incidents happening, that they can be removed, up to discretion of animal control officers, without a certain number happening, if they're in vicious or danger. So it doesn't have to happen multiple times, that's just, if it does, it has to be solved then, but if it happens fewer.
We'll be working on it, Jessica, I told Jessica she might have reviewed everything starting back.
Thank you. I have another question, do you think what Nick and I asked, do you think it would be wise to make courtesy call to, as you were like?
Certainly, we can do that.
Is that out of line?
No, because I, in all due respect, I think that, you know, it's shown, it's pretty
No, he's talking to speed, I'm not talking about his speed.
Very aggressive, very aggressive out here.
Well, I, I think if we know, again, they may just
Oh, we're certain of the control.
Now, we're just totally comments for items on agenda, man. You wait that maybe.
Um, you just explained, that the, a dog chasing a chicken is like a cat chasing a mouse, it's, it's a game, you know, and if it did it once, it's gonna do it again, it doesn't necessarily mean that the dog's vicious, it's just, it's a game tool.
Another nature.
Right, it's, it's just something that happens.
I've seen it every day.
It shouldn't be vicious, but it, it's not, it doesn't mean it's vicious.
No, and, and I, I
I understand that, but at the same time, if it takes, and I'm gonna say the name, and I, I'm very alert, but I have a Maltese at my house, and And a Maltese, it's a Maltese and a food.
Oh, don't pick on those teddy bears or something.
Oh, you've got a teddy bear. I don't know.
Oh.
I live in a house with girls, can you imagine? If this dog had attacked my dog, there wouldn't be any question about hitting a dangerous animal. But because they're chickens, and they taste good fried, people are looking a different angle, and I just want to point out back then, that it's not one twice, three, four times. It should be once it's an accident, two, they know where they are, and three, they're gonna keep coming in the same direction.
That's why I cited them here, it's the first.
And while a dog is a dog, we have to also keep perspective here, it's the owner.
It's the owner, absolutely.
And have the responsibility here, and they need to understand that they have the responsibility to
We've got Norton State here, so I mean
Anything else?